Oh, great. I always carry an extra now for you, Peter.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation concerning a potential interlocutory appeal in ZBA number 19-07, the school, street, Piper Lane comprehensive permit proceedings to the Housing Appeals Committee by the town of DHCD's June 20th, 2019 Safe Harbor decision and to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property located at 90 School Street and 4 to 6 Piper Lane Act.
So moved. Second.
Motion made in second. Before we call the roll, the board will discuss with Town Council, strategy with respect to litigation concerning a potential imminent expedited interlocutory appeal in ZBA number 1907 by the town of, to the Housing Appeals Committee pursuant to 760 CMR 56.038C, 56059C, and 56067E11 challenging any or all aspects of the decision of the Department of Housing and Community Development dated June 21st, 2019, which appeal, if taken, must be filed within 20 days of the town's receipt of DHCD's decision and to consideration of purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property located at 90 School Street and 4 to 6 Piper Lane Act. Discussing either matter in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating and litigating position of the town. Would clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Mr. Berry?
Hi.
Ms. Gardner?
Hi.
Mr. Vincent?
Hi.
Mr. Tratt?
Hi.
At the conclusion of the executive session, the board will reconvene in open session.
No, no, I'm not ready. Go ahead. Do I take the mic if that works? Okay, sure. Terracotta, West Acton, I'm concerned because in the master plan, the first goal is to preserve the rural character of the town, the town character, and I keep asking for a report on what we're doing in that regard, and I feel like we're doing mostly construction, building, and when I was working on the phase zero of the master plan, we did a survey of over 2,000 people that asked what they don't want more of, and the number one answer was building, construction, development, and yet when the master plan came out, it had building, construction, development as the most used terms besides "the." And so nonetheless, town meeting approved it, so the very least, I think they should be doing the number one goal, which is to preserve town character, and I'd like to find out what is happening on that relative to all the other stuff we're doing. We seem to have lots of staff working on processing applications for developers and not very many staff working on preserving and conserving and all of that. And when I was on the Historic District Commission, which was over 10 years ago now, Steve Ledoux was talking about getting an FTE, quarter FTE, half FTE, actually working on historic preservation, and that still hasn't happened. Thank you. Oh, and I'm hoping that the discussed policy on board communication with residents, that there'll be some reporting on when I ask questions, that it actually gets posted someplace in public so that people can see the progress on answering the question, because just answering me in private doesn't seem to do the trick for me anyway. Thank you.
How's that?
You gentlemen? Actually, I should probably put these on before I read this. Let me read the letter. Hi, I'm McKendrick, Ranny, School Street. I wanted to read you the letter on behalf of, that was sent to you on behalf of the South Acton League of友好 Association today or yes? Yes, today, regarding the Piper Lane project. So, reading, on behalf of the South Acton League of友好 Association, I'm writing in regards to the issues that we appreciate, that the boards, the select board, and the zoning board of appeals are taking up tomorrow evening, she wrote yesterday, an executive session to be conducted during their respective meetings. First, we believe that the town must appeal the recent DHCD ruling on the housing production Safe Harbor application pursuant to the April 9th ZBA approval of Avalon Phase Two. Sanna's attorney, Dan Hill, sent an email to Town Council regarding this necessary appeal. This Safe Harbor ruling is even more critical to the town's opposition to this project than the related application Safe Harbor ruling. Second, we would like clarification on which of the proponents to submitted applications will be under consideration at the ZBA hearing scheduled for July 15th. One application was submitted on April 2nd, and the second application was submitted on June 19th without withdrawal of the first. Further clarification is sought by Sanna as to whether the comments submitted by town staff, boards, and residents pursuant to the April 2nd application will apply to the June 19th application if this is the application under consideration, as the applications are identical. Third, Sanna also requests the select board review and comment on the application which is under consideration. The BOS voted unanimously on November 5th to request a denial from Mass Housing for a PEL, but has not yet weighed in on the current proposal with comments to the ZBA and has two new members who were elected in April. Gentlemen. Finally, we would like to take the opportunity to remind both the boards that the Acton Historical Commission, with supporting comments from the Acton Historic District Commission, has requested a federal Section 106 review of the project to be conducted by Mass Historical Commission due to the use of federal monies from the New England Fund in the project financing. Native artifacts are present near and likely on the site, and we expect an adverse effect ruling due to the detrimental impact on the integrity of the contiguous South Acton Historic District. Sanna has collected approximately 450 signatures thus far from citizens opposed to the proposal, and this list is growing daily. We also note that every town board and department is opposed to the project save for the Planning Department and the Acton Community Housing Corporation, whose recommendations to approve their proposed developments are provisional on third-party review of significant safety and engineering issues which Sanna asserts are unresolvable. In appreciation for your time and attention on behalf of Sanna. Alyssa Nickel wrote that. She did a good job. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Are there other citizens' concerns? All right, town manager?
Yes, thank you.
Do you want this?
I think I'm on this mic here, so. Just a note that town meeting in April authorized the town to acquire 19 and 21 Maple Street with parking, for parking purposes, and we completed that sale today, so we now own that property, the town owns that property today.
Did you make any changes?
Not yet.
Anything else?
No, thanks.
Board communication with residents?
Sure. This was one of our short-term goals that I advanced at our Goal Setting back in May, and it was designed to cover two pieces of our procedure. One, emails that are sent from citizens to the board, and then the citizen participation portion of our meetings. So let me address the emails to the board first, because I think they've been, we can't get stuck with that. The tradition has been that the chair of the board responds to emails that are sent to the board of selectmen, and it's generally simply an acknowledgement of the letter and a very brief response. It's not designed to encourage an ongoing back and forth. I have been doing it on behalf of the new board. Now, back in, I think it was in November, I called Katie Green on this, who was our prior chair, that there was a recommendation from Mr. Mancherati, it may have been through Town Council, that when the chair replies, they should no longer include the entire board in their reply, because it could constitute a deliberation. So what do we do about that? Well, I would take a view that copying the board on the chair or the vice chair's reply is just an informative response. It certainly doesn't constitute, at least in my mind, a deliberation, and I do believe that it's the board should apply. We should not say, well, let's give it to the town manager, and then the town manager could copy everyone in, and there's no open meeting law violation in that. I think it's an obligation. The board has to reply, except in circumstances where it would be appropriate, and I have certainly done that, to have it, to turn it over to John and have him reply, because it was something within his knowledge or within his control to get to the bottom. So perhaps if we could discuss email response first, and then we could, I could lead a conversation on citizen participation.
Well, I think you're doing wonderful job.
I certainly, I would like to see the whole board copied on their reply. However, our town council is recommended not, and I've actually talked with other attorneys that work as town councils, and they also recommend it not. And it's, from what I can tell, and from what each of them has said to me, it's not out of the original reply being a violation of the OML. It's out of concern that anybody accidentally hitting reply all has basically definitely violated the OML. So it's kind of a belt and suspenders approach, basically. So if one of us, you know, if the chair or vice chair replies, and one of us were to accidentally, you know, we want to just hit reply to that person, you know, just to correct something, but you accidentally hit reply all to correct something, there's a violation of the OML.
Maybe.
Maybe, but the opinion I got from both our town council and others was like, so, not on the first communication, but on the accidental second communication. So, I mean, I think that's a concern. I mean, they seem in unanimity of their recommendation. So.
I think, I agree with Mr. Benson. I think it would be good for the entire board to be informed of any communication that the chair or vice chair makes, and I think if we go ahead with that, I think it just should be understood that this is sent out to us as a one-way communication, there's not going to be any discussion of it at all, don't reply to anyone, but at least you know that, you know, if some citizen has sent something to us, you know that thing just hasn't dropped.
Yes, no, I.
And I think that's the important thing. I think, you know, if we understand that these things are sent as a one-way communication to us, just so we'll know it's been responded to, and then we just let it drop right there, as tempted as we might be to reply and start a conversation, I think you just have to understand you can't do it.
Well, it's not just a conversation. It's, so if, you know, John were to reply to something and say, we'll be discussing that on Tuesday, and if I just wanted to say, oh, John, you meant Monday, right? And I reply to him, which is perfectly fine. I could say, you just, you said Tuesday, you meant Monday. But if I accidentally hit reply all, that may be an open meeting law violation. So that's just a, I guess I could call John on the phone and say, you meant Monday, and that way I can't accidentally hit the wrong button. So anyway, that's a concern. So there's this issue, and there's one other issue, too. I don't know, John, whether you do this now. If you think another member of the board is the right person to respond, do you contact that person? So let's say it's a question on the school building, do you contact Peter, or if it's a question on CPC, do you contact Dean, you know?
Well, that's a new thoughtful approach. I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a way to deal with it, sure. I could say, if it's a school building, just send Peter an email, could you respond on behalf of, you know, the board to this?
Yeah, like if you know the answer, you should just go ahead and do it, I would think, and then, but if you thought someone else might be better informed. So there's that issue, is who responds than the issue of whether to copy everyone.
Yeah. Regardless. I was going to say, regardless of who responds, it is unbelievable that the chief elected officials in town can't get a communication that's a public record, that everybody else in town can look up online, and we can't, we don't know, we can't look it up ourselves, I guess. We don't know what communications are coming from our board in response to citizen questions. That is unbelievable. There's got to be a way to be able to deal with that. I, just reading a case where it had to do with evaluations, and the members circulated their, you know, draft evaluations that they got, put it to the final document, and the SJC found that was a violation, even though nobody talked to each other. All they did was circulate their comments on these evaluations, because it was considered a deliberation. What the SJC suggested was, you could put that on the agenda and put all those documents in the agenda, and then, so I don't know if we could put every single letter we get and our responses on the agenda all the time or something, but there's got to be a way to be able to know what the board has communicated to residents in response to questions. It's just ridiculous. Well, I think we can, we can do it. The danger you run into is if you would send me a response back and by mistake, you know, hit reply all.
Has the committee eliminated the reply all?
No, no, there isn't. And I think that that's part of what, I understand that if a board receives something, that the board may want to be the one to respond to it, but that's part of what we're here for. Staff, whether it's me, or Lisa, or Mark, or anyone, we're happy to help with that. But I understand why we want to try to find a way for you to do it. I just think it's, it gets complicated, as we've, as we've found.
Well, just don't, you know, really make a concerted effort if you want to reply to something that Joan or I would send out, just don't hit reply all, and if there's a small chance that, you know, out of 30 or 40 of these that go out, if you want to reply all, maybe we just have to, you know.
Does John get a copy?
You on the board's?
Yeah. Yeah. But when you reply now, I assume you copied John?
I did. What I do when I reply is I copy Joan and John. But there was, you know, you had, you had raised it that, you know, you would like to see.
No, I would. I don't know how to do that, you know, and I mirror Peter's frustration that we can't do this, because I think it's, it's important to, you know, you know, for communication with residents.
Well, I would, yeah, I think it's perfect. I think it's a, it's kooky that we're even having this conversation, and I would just like to, when I reply, reply all, and all I'm asking of you guys, if you want to send something back, just don't hit reply.
Maybe we could, John, you could just approach town council and ask for the best way to do this.
Okay, I could do that, but I think it's going to be conservative advice, don't, or just, or they could say, have John reply on behalf of the board.
That's, that would be, I think, the safest way to, and that way everyone would get the information. I think if, even if the approach that you suggested, I think in the situation where you find, let's say, he meant, he said Tuesday, but he meant Monday, you could let me know that, and I can follow up.
Yes. But that, that means we don't reply at all. Wait, if we find an error, we let John know.
I mean, it just seems to me that if a letter, if a citizen's question is sent to the board, the board should reply, it needn't have to be, you know, delegated how to. Yeah, I mean, I agree with that. I mean, we're politicians. People have a right to talk to their politicians and get an answer from their politicians, not from administrative staff.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think in that initial communication, we should find a way of communicating it to all of us, you know, whether it's on paper, whether it's the copy, and we just never reply. If there's anything we need to say, we say it to John.
Say it to John, he can get to me. That might be the way to deal with it.
That's completely fine with me.
Well, can John send a notice out to three of?
John can do anything he wants.
Yes.
Seriously, the, the, the open meeting law does not apply to staff.
So if John gets a copy of the message?
No, I think it, I'm, I think I'm more comfortable with facilitating whoever it is delegated to help commu, to respond to, to the query, and I can help with that.
That means, that means he'd always be the source of the reply?
No, or, or if the chair decides that this is an issue that would be best addressed. I think it's something that we should continue to discuss with council. It sounds like you're looking for some, some ways for them to feel comfortable, and I would want that, too. So I'd be happy to continue that conversation.
You know, I just use as the example, for me, is, you know, the board got a communication from a resident in town about the flags in Acton Center, and it was, it was, my name was mentioned, so I replied, right? I forgave him how we decided, I would reply. I guess I emailed John, I don't remember, but that, I would have liked to have been able to copy the rest of it, but I couldn't copy the rest of it.
Well, I, I may have, I think, yeah, it was, it was your name was on it, and I may.
Oh, do forward it to me, that's right. And that's, that's correct.
And I think I said to John, you know, figure it out, and you know, I mean, there's been a number of times, just so people know that, when, you know, when questions come in that are appropriate for John to respond to, I send it onto him and copy Joan and say, John, we can take care of this, and he gets right on it.
In this particular case, the resident knew me, because our kids have gone to school together, and so, and so she, she asked me about the flags in.
Okay, we'll continue.
I would suggest a written policy. I mean, if we're going to come up with a policy that says don't respond, if that's possible, I mean, let's write it down.
Yeah, I think so, too, and I don't think we need a vote or anything, but I would recommend that John talk to town council directly, and I think we, we're all thinking the same thing, what we want. Let's try to figure out with town council a way to do it.
Okay. And then the second piece was, was the citizen's participation portion of our meeting, that, you know, it's tradition, we hear comments, and there's no reply to the comments, and what I was trying to advance was a little different approach. When we hear the comments, I mean, quite a number of the comments are issues that a person has with a service or a problem, obstruction, a difficulty, and, you know, they can be referred directly to John, and John could deal with them, and say that upfront at the meeting. And there, there may be, you know, circumstances where we go a little different direction, and we're a board member who has knowledge of the issue that the citizen presents, could give a brief response, so the citizen could walk away, satisfied that they've been heard, and there's a response. So I think that is something, you know, we can do.
So you're saying if, if, just reword this, sorry, make sure I'm understanding, if one of us has a response, we can respond at the time, or, or if we think that John, you know, needs to, ask John to do something to respond, to adequately respond to the resident's concern. I do think that not all comments need responses.
That's correct.
Right, so sometimes it's just information for us, you know.
But often times, there's a, there's a problem, and we could use this as an opportunity to respond, either it goes to John, or if it's something about the South Acton Train Station, you know, David, you could respond to it, or something about 53 River Street, Peter could respond to it.
That makes sense to me.
If it's a cemetery question, Joan could respond to it.
Okay, we'll bring this back.
Okay.
All right? Now, the next is town meeting improvement committee card, and we have something here. The town meeting improvement committee shall consist of nine members. The members shall include the assistant town manager, Mark Hall, two members of the Acton League of Women Voters, two members who have been residents of the town for less than 10 years, two regular attendees of town meetings, one representative of the council of aging board, and one representative of the Commission on Disabilities. Town moderator, Joanne Berry, has agreed to work with the committee. The committee's tasks are twofold and are intended to increase town meeting attendance. The first is to propose improvements to the town meeting format, which may be adopted and put in place for the annual town meeting in 2020. The second is to identify issues for possible long-term study, such as remote voting and making information on warrant articles better available to citizens. The committee shall file its report with Board of Selectmen on or before February 14th, 2020. The town meeting improvements committee shall sunset on the conclusion of the town meeting 2020. Discussion? Dean?
Yeah, I put that as a motion, actually. I think it seems to have hit all the items that we've been concerned about. Certainly, you know, issues were raised, especially amongst newer members of the community, that they were, didn't really understand the process, and whatever we can do to facilitate town meeting would be a great idea, and I think we should go ahead with it.
Is there a second?
A second? Yeah, just in terms of, again, you know, this grew out of Article 38, and the lateness of the hour that the article was, was taken up, and there were about 150, 160 town meeting participants there. I spoke with, at the urging of Charlie Aronson, who spoke to me at the end of last meeting about how members should be picked to go through the VCC, I reached out to Greg Hutchins, who chairs the VCC, explained to him what we were up to with this, and asked him, would it be okay if the select board chose the members without having a formal application to the VCC and VCC interviews? And he expressed he's not put off by that, and that would be okay by, by him. It was done, you know, with the town manager search committee in 2017, and, you know, I would, you know, like to approach it that way, but I touched that base.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I don't think we usually make staff members actually members of committees. I think we put it in language that says it'll be staffed by, I mean, I really don't have, I guess, a strong objection to it, but that's a little unusual. I can't, I don't know of any other, they're usually like ex officio members who advise and, you know, provide information or whatever, but I'm not aware of any other committee that actually makes a staff member, maybe Dean knows some, a member. The, the. Actually, you were Green Advisory Board.
Were you a member?
I was not a voting member.
Oh, okay.
But to that point, with a number of building committees that I was involved with, I was actually a voting member of the committee even though I was staff.
Okay.
So, but I think, I think the key is that it's a short duration-
Yeah.
...project. And personally, I found that as a staff member, you were more motivated if you were a voting member. But I don't think Mark needs any additional motivation, but, but those are the only ones I'm aware of. And like I say, I served on probably three building committees in that capacity.
Okay.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Comment?
Yes, so I agree with what I've heard and I hope that the people that you choose that haven't been in town for a while are people who aren't on other committees. I feel like we need fresh faces and, and I also don't like the idea of any kind of precedent being set to bypass VCC. I think we have VCC for a reason. And so, whereas this is the permitting board, it's, you know, temporary. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Recent open meeting law complaints.
The board received two open meeting law complaints. The first is for meeting, we received them on June 19th and June 17th, I believe. The first was related to a meeting that took place May 20th. And the alleged violation is that the minutes didn't reflect what happened at the meeting. To summarize, I think there's some other things in there as well. So at this point, the board would have a discussion about the allegations and then as we've done in the past, or as we've done in the past, delegate a person to record and send a response. One thing that may help is that generally minutes have, have specific requirements and our minutes, I believe, are meeting those requirements, I think. But that's, I think that the allegation is that there should be additional or different information in the minutes.
So you think there should be?
Well, that's what the allegation is, is that there should be different or, or additional information.
Madam Chairman? I, now, I've reviewed this and I reviewed the minutes that are in question and I, frankly, I think the minutes accurately reflected what went on. I don't believe that minutes require a stenographer's transcript to pick up every single word that was said. They are what they are. And frankly, I'm, I'm quite happy with minutes as they were recorded. And I would suggest that we delegate the response on this to the town manager.
All right, seconded. Dean?
I agree.
I agree as well.
I, I mean, I reviewed the minutes before we voted to approve them. We made some changes. If there was a vote, the, the second wasn't reported on it or the movie part wasn't recorded, we corrected what we thought should be put in there. And I was very comfortable. I agree with Dean. It doesn't have to be a survey of transcript of what happened. It has to be just accurate and if they were accurate, so.
All right, town manager.
Town manager.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on that?
We didn't actually vote.
Does that take a vote?
Well, we, there's a motion on the floor that was seconded.
A motion made?
To, to refer it to the town manager for a response.
You seconded it?
I seconded. John seconded it.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
So, and the second violation was the alleged, the date of alleged violation was June 17th? And this is a, the complaint, the alleged violation is, is related to administration and the administrative process of getting the minutes approved?
If I'm correct, there were two sets of minutes, there were multiple sets of minutes that were approved at the June 17th meeting. Two of those minute sets of May 6th and May 13th were, were late in the sense that they were either more than a month after the meeting or three meetings. So that would be a, you know, a, you know, a technical, you know, infraction. So I think we have to acknowledge that. So I would move that we delegate a response to the second open meeting law complaint dated June 19th for alleged violations and June 17th for John Troy to respond to.
There a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes. This point about the sequence in which the minutes have to be, have to be reviewed and approved within 30 days or a certain number of meetings, is, is that a guideline from the Attorney General's office or is that something that's set in statute? I've heard-
It's in the open meeting.
And so it is in the open?
Well, you're asking about the requirement to approve minutes?
Right.
I have the regulation right here. Minutes of all, this is the AG's regulations, minutes of all open and executive sessions shall be created and approved in a timely manner. A quote "timely manner" close quote will generally be considered to be within the next three public body meetings or within 30 days, whichever is later, unless the public body can show good cause for further delay. So it's, it's not hard to fast rule. It absolutely has to be done.
Okay. Thank you.
They encourage public bodies to approve minutes at the next meeting, if they ever possibly.
So unless there, you know, is a, there was some glitch internally, I mean, if there is, let's set that out.
But I think there's not a problem in acknowledging, in this case, that it was past 30 days.
Right.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What are we doing, referring this one to John?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, item six, create and appoint a special town forest committee pursuant under general laws, chapter 45, section 21.
So this is related to a portion of the Will's Hole Conservation Land, the town forest off Quarry Road, kind of the left side of the street up, if you're driving with narrow on your right. This, the water, the water district is looking to add a redundant water line for their system through that area of the town forest. And since we don't have a forest committee, we're asking the board to appoint a special forest committee to consider this matter. The general law provides for the board to appoint a special committee of three people. So that's what we're looking for you to do, to consider doing.
Okay, do we have people in mind or are we going to?
It can be staff, it can be members of the board. We can do an exhaustive search for people that want to do it.
This is just for this one project, true?
Yes.
And what's the timing?
Well, the way it's set up is, it wouldn't be necessary for this project. The way it's set up is you have to appoint them for a year.
Okay.
Or actually, each, one member of said committee shall be appointed each year for a term of three years, except that when first appointed, one shall be appointed for three, one for two, and one for one. So.
Okay, so it's a three-year committee?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A bit of history, the town for many years did have a town forest committee and it was sunsetted probably in the 80s. And a lot of the responsibilities were turned over to the conservation commission. And I guess if we establish this, I think we need to know is, would this special town forest committee be expected to look at other things? The original point behind the town forest was timber stand improvement, you know, production of timber and fuel wood. Or is this, is the sole purpose just to, to get through this issue with putting the water line in? I think the scope of the commission, I think, is, is important.
Yeah, so the forest committee, committee is laid out, I think, in past history, as you mentioned, but we haven't heard, or I haven't heard of a need or other matters that are needing that such a group to discuss. I think the only reason that it's being brought forward at this time is because there is a request that's been made and we don't have the ability to review it with our existing organizational structure.
So just, it would exist just while this construction is going on?
I think, I, I don't, I don't know that we'd be able to have it end, but I don't see any, any additional work for that group to do.
Well, you got, if the statute does require it, you have to shell appoint a special town forest committee to manage and care for that portion of the public domain known as a town forest. So technically, it would encompass all those issues. There is language in here, though, that says the town may vote to designate the conservation commission of said town to manage and care for such town forests. So I, I will propose that we designate the conservation commission run by Tom Timman, who probably oversees the town forest anyway, and they can make this, whatever they have to do to allow this project to go forward also. And, and we can just designate them. That's the way I'm reading the statutes. It's, it's attached to it, right?
I think to follow up a little more, there are actually two town forests in Acton, the other one being a piece of land on, off Buellut Road, some of which is, has been subsumed by conservation land. But I certainly agree with you. I think conservation is the reasonable place to put it. And I think, although it was done informally back in the 80s, I think that was the intent all along, was that, that conservation commission would serve as well as town forest commission.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, is there a motion?
I just wanted to speak in favor of the notion of having the conservation commission do this. Jim Snyder, West Acton, from the land stewardship committee point of view, we're often referring and working with the conservation commission on issues that are important to us but outside of our jurisdictions, such as the naming of trails, the naming of conservation lands, plans to, you know, how to deal with invasive plants that are, that are, that are, you know, involve more work than we feel safe doing on our own. So the notion of having to suddenly go to this new body of people that didn't know anything about taking care of forested land is scary. So thank you for considering that. Yeah, Bob Guba remembers the cut accord days and, yeah, which you do too. So one of the things that the creation of a town forest commission might waken up is the right of townspeople potentially to go, go cut down some trees out of the, out of the town forest, which might be a really interesting issue that the, the town forest commission and the board of selectmen might want to look at. Because we, it might be that we're in an era where we don't actually want to have people wandering around with chainsaws in a designated area to cut down some trees. So just, you know, watch out for that, but I'm sure you will. Thanks.
It was scary enough when they did it before.
Yeah, thank you.
Territorial projects, West Acton. I'm just concerned because, well, first of all, it seems that insulate is involved and water for insulate, when insulate is reportedly using or wanting to use like a third of our water that's left, I don't know the actual figures, but it was some outrageous amount of water. And I feel like instead of, as I think Peter said, to get this project approved or move this project forward, like, I feel like we got to stop thinking in that terms of always moving these instruction projects forward and think about in terms of protecting our resources and thinking, is this actually something we want to do as opposed to finding a way to appoint a commission so that we can approve a project to bring, you know, construction through our front forest? Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I might respond. Just as a point of clarification, I know from my time on staff, this sort of a waterline connection has been envisioned for over 20 years, well before insulate even existed. It's been a, an important safety issue for, not only for the Indian Eagle Park Drive, but an important safety issue as well for the folks in North Acton because, you know, it's a two-way switch. And, you know, it would actually facilitate us being able to get access in an emergency situation to other supplies of water. So it really, I'm surprised it's taken as long as it has, but I had discussions about this 20 or 25 years ago with the water districts. It's always been sort of one of their objectives.
It's also normal practice to want to have a water main be two-ended to, because otherwise you have pressure drops at the end. So you either, in normal practice, put a water tower at the end and you pump into the water tower, you know, in periods of low demand and you let it flow from both ends in periods of high demand, or you have a loop. So that's, it's normal practice.
Okay, so is there a motion on?
I'll, I'll move that pursuant to Mass General Law's chapter 45, section 21. The board of selectmen designates the conservation commission in Acton to manage and care for the town forests.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Charles. Update on the North Acton fire station?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to bring the board up to date on where we are with the design process. We had the public input meeting a few weeks ago. We're, we're scheduling another one for later in July. We're working with the school folks and a few other people to make sure that it's a good night without any conflicts. We're looking at probably the last week of July. But I'll, I'll have that out for your next meeting. I'll have a firm date. So we've, as I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we were trying to identify what type of footprint we would be able to use on the land, given the constraints from an environmental standpoint. And we were looking at a two-story and a one-story layout. The two-story would have a, you know, tighter layout and the one-story would be more cost effective. And we were able to identify a way to do an 11,000 to 12,000 square foot, single-story fire station layout, which will work. The parking would be, the, the three-car garage that's there now with a barn structure would stay there and the parking for the, mostly the fire staff would be behind that, actually. And they're, we're, we're looking to have, a way to have a small amount of public parking closer to the front, but we're still working that through. We'll have, we'll hope to have some elevation looks for what it might look like to share with the DRB and everyone else this month and at the public meeting. And the information, the program study, which is the space needs analysis to show what the fire department needs and what the community needs, that's been uploaded to our website, actonma.gov/firestation, all one word. And that, you'll be able to review, you can review the space needs study. And we, I've also uploaded the, the floor plan, the conceptual preliminary draft floor plan for what it would look like with a single-story layout, three, three bays. And it's, the design process is coming along very well. We're, we're meeting this week, or I guess next week, to discuss traffic engineering, which during the public meeting, there was a few questions about the intersection of Main and Harris and a few questions about the other end. and Harris, and a few questions about the other end. And so we're starting the process now to see exactly what would have to, improvements, if any, would be needed at those two approaches, to make sure that it continues to be a safe, safe condition. So, you know, this is a regular update that I want to bring to the board. It's brief by nature, but I think at the next one, I'll probably have things I can show you up on the screen. But this is also an opportunity, if you have any questions, or if any of your, if you've heard from anyone with questions, I'm happy to work on those in the meantime.
Peter?
What about the sustainability piece? Is it possible to get a carbon-neutral building?
We've made it very clear that that's a priority, to do a project as close to that as possible. We're already planning all-electric. There was one, there was radiant heating for part of the building that we, they were still thinking about using gas for, but I think we've gotten past that. So at this point, we're looking at all-electric. Of course, there will be a generator. The generator is going to need to be fueled, and we're looking at diesel for that. There isn't a lot of room, or a lot of, it's not a very big building, so doing the heat source, ground source, may not, may not be feasible, but we are, we are looking at that as well.
Okay. Do you anticipate the project will be ready for December?
It will be ready, yes. We'll have, we'll have the costs, we won't have it out to bid, but we'll have peer-reviewed cost estimates that we'll be comfortable bringing forward and presenting to the community.
So the project would be, you know, throughout the fall, because, you know, there will be an outreach group forming to go out and explain the project to the community. They will have sufficient information to make that case, I take it?
Yeah, we're sort of, the website I mentioned earlier, actonma.gov/firestation, all one word, is meant to be sort of the clearinghouse for information on the project, and we're adding documents to that every week or so, and we'll continue to do that throughout the design process.
But you anticipate we're all set to go?
That's the schedule. You know, we have a good team, and they're, they're working very hard to meet our schedule.
Because the number has been thrown out, we're about 25% there, and I remember from the Kelly's Corner project, the 25% public hearing, really wasn't 25%, it was really, you were at the 75% stage.
It's, it's not really a comparable process, but we're in a good place. I think the fact that we have the floor plan kind of generally laid out, and now we can focus on sort of the elevations, and the materials, and some other things, to get some community input and board input. So I think we're on the right track.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay. South Acton Train Station and Advisory Committee recommendations regarding parking?
I can talk to those unless Michaela would like to talk to me.
That's all yours.
Okay, great. So, in the, as part of, part of the packet is an email from Michaela, listing SatSec's You can read through them, but I just kind of talk about the reasoning behind these recommendations. First of all, and these go along, by the way, with the consultant's recommendations for the parking study. So the, one of the main consultant's recommendations was to try to encourage people to park remotely. And the current parking fees at the station kind of do the inverse of that. It's actually cheaper for residents to park at the station than it is for them to park remotely. In fact, so, I think today, if I'm not mistaken, to park at Mount Calvary Church, for example, is $250 a year, and a sticker to park at the station is $100 a year. And so, you know, we're encouraging people not to park remotely, except for the issue of time, because the spaces at the station fill up, fill up earlier. And also the changes in parking, especially the increases in the rates for the reserved parking, pay for the land that we just acquired this morning. So, that's, that's the main reason for the, for the increase there. One, there is, right now, we have one reserved parking rate, the proposals from SatSec are for two, the ones that are right adjacent to the station, and Maple Street would be higher priced than the ones at Jones Field.
When you talk about remote parking, we're talking about the West Acton Fire Station and Mount Calvary Church?
Yes, but the only reason we say in the, in the general term is that we would like to encourage more remote parking, and I know that's being, you know, considered by TAC and the Health Department. You know, there's a little bit of, you have to reach a certain confidence that you can have the demand for another van and driver, right? So that, you know, before that can happen. But you're absolutely right, right now, we have those two locations. Other locations in town are being considered. That's not, SatSec doesn't do those.
When I went to Doug Haley in Freddie Houseman about this last spring, and I said, could we expand the program, and at both Calvary and the Fire Station, you can only have 10 spaces, that's all they can, all they can get at each, has that been increased?
I thought it was 20 each, but I wouldn't, I can find out from the town's website, but I thought it was, there were 20 spaces in each site.
And I asked, well, could we use the Acton Center Fire Station, you know, for additional parking? And Doug said, the problem with that is, it's too far out to run multiple trips at the station, bring them to the train station, back to the Acton Center Fire Station, there's just not enough time to make the multiple trips to reach the multiple trains that are leaving in the morning.
Yes, so that's why I said, you have to reach this confidence and level of demand that you can justify having another van and another driver. So he's absolutely right, that there isn't time to visit between the two trains that it serves now, to visit West Acton, you know, Mount Calvary Church, and Acton Center, and make it back to the station with one van. So there are several vans around, because there's a completely separate van that goes to Maynard and makes one other stop in South Acton. But if we had yet another rail shuttle van, we could actually support other remote parking lots, potentially. I will say one other thing, the first shuttle in the morning also picks up at Negaug Park, because there's no issue of time.
That's right.
Right, because, except for on the, on the part of the riders, who have to get up and be at Negaug Park at 5:45. But, so there's that, there's that one run, there must be a return run in the evening, but I don't know when that happens. So, you're right, between the trains, there isn't enough time for a single van to serve three sides. So, but there is, if we, then that's really a TAC recommendation and a Health Department plan to expand that. But, so these are a little bit orthogonal of that, but they support the expansion, these prices, proposed prices, support the expansion of remote parking.
Yeah.
And so basically, the remote parking would be a dollar a day, instead of $3 a day? And the price of the sticker, which is a huge bargain anyway, goes up to $200 a year?
That's, that's more than reasonable.
Yeah, and that's, that's the feedback we've gotten from a lot of people.
Yeah, that's, it used to be for many years, $50 a year, and then it was bumped to 100.
Yes, and then, and then lastly, there is also a big increase for the reserved parking on both the existing Maple Street property, that used to be the Monturi property, and there's the bike trail parking lot, and the new Gordon Lot. We'll have to decide names for these things. Actually, I would like the Gordon one to be the Maple Street Lot, and the other one to be the Bike Trail Lot, but whatever, whatever names we want to call them, it doesn't matter much to me. The prices there are to support paying off the purchase of the Richards property.
I was just concerned that the, the two Maple Street lots, right now, it's $100 a month.
Yes.
And I know when I made the presentation at town meeting to buy the Gordon Richards Lot, a question was asked, how much do you anticipate raising the raise on that lot? And I think I said it, 120, maybe 125, but no, it wasn't going up to 200 or 250. So I hope we could...
So the, the calculations that we did to actually pay off the Richards property are more than 120, it's close to 150.
Okay.
And then it depends on how many spaces you cover, right? So we decided to, at the SatSec meeting, there was, there was discussion not to increase the price of the Jones Field parking as much. And so the others went up more. And the whole concept actually supports the reduction in price of the remote parking.
I mean, as I know with the remote, I thought it was like 10 spaces at each of the two locations.
It's actually, Mount Calvary has 22, and Acton has 23.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, is that's more than, okay.
And what does this do for people from outside the community?
It doesn't change anything in that regard. Right now, people in the community, first of all, get a discount because they can do as, the stickers, and they get exclusive access to the two parking lots on School Street, and 60% of the space is in the main lot.
Plus this South Acton Train Station behind that, isn't it, residents? Oh, the two, you said the two, I'm sorry.
There's two parking lots on School Street, one with the Fire Station and one across from Exchange Hall, and then 60% of the space is at the main lot.
Would it be a differential resident versus non-resident for the, what's now the Gordon Richards lot?
We, we've never done such a thing, and so, and SatSec didn't recommend that this time. I mean, you know, we can put in, you know, we can change SatSec's recommendations, if that's what you...
So what does that mean, the Maple Street lot, lottery is open to anyone?
That's correct. And that's the way it is now, actually. And the other thing, if you look at the last sentence of Michaela's recommendation, is that the, SatSec is recommending using the lottery for any open spaces that come up, any, when we, spaces free up in the lot, at the reserved lot, but allow people to re-up them if they already have them.
The people who have the 40 spaces in Gordon's existing lot, would they get to have first choice to keep them?
John agreed to do that at the parking forum.
Okay.
And so, that, to get, you know, I think, no, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, that's fair.
I've been, I've been, and that meets the standard that SatSec took, in fact, you know, John put a big asterisk on that, saying, you know, at that point, it wasn't guaranteed that we were closing on the land, right? We didn't own it yet.
Yes, I'm sure.
Right, so...
Just to clarify, I notified all the people that were currently, or are currently renting spaces, to let them know that, you know, we plan to acquire the property on July 1st, and that we plan to honor your existing arrangement for the months of July and August, with the idea that the Board of Selectmen will be making decisions this summer on what will be happening there next. So whether it's a rate change or a program change, they're sort of waiting to hear from me, or from us, or from you, what, if anything, will change starting September 1st.
So we need to put this on our agenda for either the meeting on the 15th, or the one meeting in August, so they're all square?
Yes.
Or, I think the last statement here would cover that. The last statement says that people can keep their existing spaces.
So that would be the existing spaces in Gordon's lot, and the existing spaces at Jones Field?
Right, and we can amend that, you know, in our motion, if we adopt these pricing recommendations.
And Maple Street, not only Gordon's lot, the other?
The other, the Monturi lot.
All the reserved lots, which are Jones Field.
So whoever has those, whoever, except for the Monturi lot, those were won by lot, awarded by lottery, so those people would get to keep them for as long as they...
I like to describe it like season tickets. We should keep paying for your season tickets. You can get, and that's the feedback that we've heard a lot from, because changing parking, you know, being, losing your parking space can be very disruptive to people's lives. They, you know, they might have to change childcare arrangements, or their...
Always huge.
It's a very, very big deal for people, which is why all the people approached John after the parking forum, you know, all the people that rented from Mr. Richards. So...
So, yes, so, yes, I would certainly support that. On the rates, particularly at the, at the two Maple Street lots, you know, I'd bring them down below, you know, 180, I think that's, that's really a bit brisk. Keep in mind that the people who commute into Cambridge and Boston with the monthly pass, that is over $300 a month, and it, and I think those fares are due to go up again, or at least, I know at least the T fares are.
Just today.
Today.
Was that for the month, was that for the railroad as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, what you're talking about there is, if you charge 180 or 200 a month, between the parking per month and the cost of the monthly pass, that's over $500 a month, $6,000 a year, you know, just to get to your work, to earn the money to pay all your...
So, I would say two things to that. One is, you'll notice the dollars between Jones Field and this average out to the amount which pays off the Richards property. Right, so that's, that's one of the reasons those were set. And second was in the recommendations from the parking consultant, was that the premium services should have premium costs, right? If we're going to bring these down to the price of the daily rate, we should just make them daily spaces.
No, they, well, no, then you get into problems with the neighborhood.
No, I agree with that, but my argument...
I just thought 180 was a bit brisk, if you had it 150.
Well, then we'd have to bring, you know, to pay off the bonds for the Richards property, we'd have to bring the Jones Field up to 150, and we lose that differential.
When we were doing that in preparation for town meeting, it didn't, I think you were able to, particularly if you're raising rates on them, you know, from 100 to 200 a month on the, that, that the rates you had pretty much covered the costs.
That actually is not true.
Is not true.
No, we worked with Dave Rollinghoff, who's a member of SatSec and a member of the committee.
Yeah, sure.
And he came out in the high 140s for paying off the...
Okay, that's fair, okay.
And, and again, I think it's important that the, you know, the premium services do this, and also, we want to be able to be in the position of supporting the vans to be able to use remote services. Right? If, right now, the vans are paid for proportionally by the amount that they stop at the station, which, that's more important in this plan than what the consultant recommended, in order to support the remote parking, so it's less than the parking at the station.
The key with the remote parking, if you want to expand it, you've got to find spaces that could accommodate the remote parkers to begin with.
Yes, and there are other places in town that have been considered. Yeah, I mean, I think that there are other places that there could be lots. The thing that would have to happen is that we need another, we need to take this jump from another van, another driver.
We're, I think, we have two, we use two vans and...
Right, there's one main rail shuttle van, and then there's the one that runs to Maynard cooperatively with Town of Maynard, and stops, I think, at the corner... cooperatively with Town of Maynard and stops, I think, at the corner of Parker and Hyde.
Because my whole idea of these, you know, we need more parking and, you know, as a local effort to affect climate change, we want to get people off of Route 2 and onto the trains and whatever accommodations we can make to do that, we really need to do. And I don't want to get a lot of pushback that, you know, price, you know, to, you know, where it's over $500 a month to park and, you know, get into town, that's going to discourage people, I think.
Can I make a comment? There were people that said that, pretty expensive, but it's worth it. And I've also heard people say, who in the heck buys those spaces and then doesn't park in them? So there was a suggestion that the parking space lot, the reserved spaces should be linked solely to those people who have rail passes, so that the commuters that are actually using the train are the ones that get the spaces. So we didn't quite know how to manage that.
That's a tough one.
So I'm throwing it out there. There are people that can pay that free of having a space just so that they go in for one meeting or two meetings a month. Who knows what they're doing? But there is that. The second suggestion for making sure that those premium spaces were filled is to oversell them. In other words, if we have 200 of those spaces, we sell 215 or we sell 220, so, you know, somewhere between 1 and 5% more of the spaces. So that's not a recommendation that we made to you this time, but we will, in our committee, be discussing this sort of parking stuff in the future and discussing whether we go to a single freight for parking and go to the system at all the remote lots. So the remote lots cost less, and you get a van to it, and then the near lots, and all the spaces are meeting spaces. So we're going to be talking about that in the next year or so, but it's, that's a big change. So for this near term, we've just gotten the report from our consultant, and you guys have to make a decision pretty soon, and people want to know by September 1, what they're going to do with their cars. We couldn't make that recommendation right off the bat because everybody's going to go, "Meh." So we'll have a few discussions and a few talking about this kind of thing, but it's.
Peter?
Well, just a couple of quick thoughts. Right now, we have one shuttle from West Acton, and that goes to Mount Cal where he picks people up and then goes to the train station. So the consultants mentioned the Temple, Congregation, Elee, or Ace Hardware. I mean, if you've got spaces that were right on that route where they go now, that probably would work better.
And I don't know if Doug Hill has looked into, I know he's looked actually into both of them. I don't know if there was progress.
Right. The Temple seems to have a lot of parking that probably doesn't get used during the week that much. But the other thing is that you've got the Maple Street lots, the justification for the higher number is 30 days instead of 20 days. I mean, they're not reserved on the weekends, are they?
No, that was just a multiplier that SATSEC used to adjust the base cost. So if the base cost, the daily rate was $6, those spaces on Maple Street were 6 times 30.
Right.
And the Jones Field was 6 times 20. So it really wasn't the number of days. I know that's how the number with the multiplier originally came from, but.
I mean, when I used to have to drive into work, I would usually just drive to Elee, but that's $9 a day now, so, you know, or if you got to downtown to park, you're spending $45 a day or something.
You got to get a home equity loan.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm okay with these recommendations, I think, so.
Dean?
Yeah, I think the only thing that you've heard before is I was hoping that we'd see more of some sort of differential for those reserved spots to, you know, recognize that, you know, lower price for Acton residents and a higher price for out-of-towners. And, you know, that, if we put in that kind of differential specifically for the Gordon Richards lot, and we're getting a little more money from the out-of-towners, then maybe that might help John out with his problem about it being such a high rate for in-town Acton residents. So I'd like to see that at least considered a little more, but otherwise, you know, I think.
Do you have a proposal for a mounted discount to Acton residents yet?
I mean, the problem with the Montori lot is that's owned by the MBTA, so we really can't set a two-tier, you know, level for that. They would certainly object to.
Yes, we haven't ever discounted the reserved spaces for Acton residents.
You mean like in Jones Field?
Yes, or, yeah, or either of them, the bike trail lot or Jones Field. Jones Field was the first, we didn't discount that for Acton residents.
Well, Jones Field, we own.
Right, but we never discounted it for Acton residents.
Yeah, okay, and then.
But these have to go in effect for July 1, is that right?
No, September 1.
September 1.
Well, if you want to send all the new people to the lottery anyway, you can charge those that come from outside of Acton a higher rate for the reserved space if they win the lottery than those who do not come from Acton. So if you want to mess with that, you can do it that way.
Yeah, I would like to see that, and, you know, you folks certainly know all the fine details a lot more than I will ever even achieve.
So we can move.
And, you know, look at if there's some way to make some adjustment, because I just really think that we need to continue to put some pressure on some of our towns to the west to encourage them to look at, decide to build some of their own lots and figuring out how they're going to get their feet to the train station in Acton.
Yeah, we have had continuing discussions, and I think we'll be discussing that again So we could, you know, have a motion to do the, I'm not actually moving it forward, but to do the SATSEC recommendations, maybe with a 25% discount for residents for the reserved parking spaces, or 20% discount, or whatever, I don't know what people think.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I would move that we accept the SATSEC recommendations, with the only amendment being that for the reserved lots, reserved spots, we want to reduce the cost to the Acton residents by 20%.
Second?
John?
That means you have to raise the cost for non-residents.
So that would be 80% of 180 to 210 and 80% of 120 to 240. So.
And the non-residents would be 120%.
Right, so they.
Are you mind buying your motion?
No.
No, it means reducing, you want to keep, that means less income.
Well, yes.
I mean, if you're going to reduce for residents.
We'd reduce it for Acton residents, we'd raise it for the out-of-towners.
So just so you know, the reason why these were put in a range, John, and including the $6 to $7 a day, is to make sure that the parking enterprise budget had enough funding to cover everything we wanted to cover. So basically, if the parking enterprise fund has enough money, then based on these rates that's with the $6 multiplied by 20 and by 30, we would do that. If you had to go to $6.50 or $7.00 to fully fund everything, like pay the bonds off, then you could choose a number within this range.
I appreciate the flexibility, but I would prefer a specific number that is, if you're setting a rate, I'd rather have the rate be set rather than a range.
Oh, okay, then would you take a friendly amendment just to take the lower numbers in SATSEC's range throughout the thing? So it'd be $6, 120, and 180 for the three numbers?
For the residents.
For the residents.
Well, those are all non-resident numbers? And then would you propose it would be 80% of those of the 120 and 180 for Acton residents? I could do the math here.
That's 96.
That's going to create a less income, huh?
Yes, a little bit less income, but it depends on how many.
Non-residents.
So what we'd have to do in that case is if we found that the parking enterprise budget is going down, then we'd have to have another rate increase at some point.
Well, if you just charge the seven, that's most non-residents that have to pay if they're parking separately. You're talking about in the reserved space, so changing that.
Yeah, the only thing there was, there seemed to be some sensitivity on the board for the higher prices.
Well, that would be the highest category price, out of the Concord, six, and I think you have.
Just, yeah, by the way, we, at $6, we would be matching the neighboring stations. So Littleton and West Concord are both six.
Okay, okay, that's fair.
So that's why I was proposing as an amendment to Dean's motion to choose the, and the fact that John requested that we have specific numbers, is to choose this six number for the daily rate, the 120 number for the Jones Field rate, the 180 number for the Maple Street lot reserved rate, and 80% of 120 and 180 for the Acton resident reserved cost for those lots. Does that make sense?
Let me just ask you, on the Montori lot, since we don't own that lot, it's owned by the MBTA, I would imagine there will be pushback, and it's got to be a unitary rate.
That could be.
So shall we?
So we would have to either have differential rates between the Richards lot and the Montori lot, or.
Assigned spaces.
Or, well, we wouldn't be able to charge two different rates. We don't, I guess we'd have to put the Acton residents and the Richards lot.
Are we, are we making this too confusing?
Yes, yes. Let's bring this back once we've looked at the total amount and all the different lots.
Do you want to, do you.
Well, I think there's some urgency here too, right, to get these prices in place.
Could we do that at our next meeting on the 15th? Could that be done so it's done thoughtfully and.
Yes, we can bring back, and we'll also, the group that did the report for us is going to have a sort of a end of the report memo that should be ready for you, ready for the SATSEC and for everyone before the 15th, so it'll be good timing to do it then.
Can we just, you just withdraw your motion? I withdraw my motion.
John, on that Montori lot, there was supposed to be some discussions with.
The DOT.
Yeah, DOT, about sharing the parking revenues with the state. I'm not sure that ever happened. I don't know if they just never followed up or what happened, or maybe it did happen, but that might help you kind of figure out whether you can charge different rates on that side or not.
It would push back on that.
Yeah, I think, I can do some work with staff, because I think the different policies for different people will create different challenges for us administering. So we'll come back and have some more ideas for the 15th.
Let's try to keep it simple, because I think we're going to get a lot of confusion. And I would, you know, if we could keep the, you know, the rates at the lower end of these two numbers, I would be comfortable with that and just have a unitary rate, so it'd be, I could see complications.
Yeah, but we don't want to, we don't have to want to be contributing general tax revenues into the parking lot fund that was brought up as an assurance we made the town meeting, that we would use the revenues from parking to pay these, so.
Well, I think if we increase the sticker from 100 to 200.
We just need to do the math on that and make some assumptions, but the revenues have to cover all the expenses for paving and lighting and plowing the lot, plus paying off the bonds for the Richards lot, plus supporting the van services to come through the lot.
All right, so we'll bring this back to our next meeting.
On the 15th, yeah.
All right, consent items. I'll leave these if anyone wants to hold. Nine, Farmers Market Winery License, Pony Shack LLC. 10, 220 Selectman Meeting Days. 11, Accept Gift Planning Condition for $2,871.41 from Seal Habit LLC for sidebar contribution as required from the Board of Appeals Decision Number 16 through 14, Condition Number 425. 12, Accept Gift Recreation Department for $500 from Soul Vital Fitness Studios to support production costs for the 2019 Summer Concert Series. 13, Accept Gift Recreation Department for $500 from Life Care Center of Acton to support production costs for the 2019 Summer Concert Series and Events. 14, One-Day Alcoholic Beverage License, Old Gold Road, Narrow Park, July 14, 2019. 15, One-Day Alcoholic Beverage License, Metro West Chamber of Commerce, Narrow Park, July 23, 2019. 16, One-Day Alcoholic Beverage License, Crystal La Suda, Narrow Park, July 6, 2019. 17, Alcoholic Beverage License, Ellen Allen Church of the Good Shepherd, August 4, 2019. 18, Refund Request, Building Division. 19, Request to Dispose of Obsolete Items, Acton Memorial Library. 20, Board to Accept a Donation of Surplus Counsel of Aging Band from the Town of Carlisle. 21, Accept Gift Counsel on Aging for $250 from Chenexia Band for Building Furniture. 22, Selectman Reports.
Okay, I move that we accept consent items 9 through 22 inclusive.
Second? Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All those who favor it say aye. Motion carried, meeting adjourned.